Okay, thank you. Calling to order, City Council meeting is now 6:35 ish. And let's start with a roll call.
Councilmember Paulson. Vice Mayor Way.
Here.
Mayor Candell.
I am here. Now, if you aren't able, let us stand and do the ceremonial pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everybody who is here, who is viewing, who are viewing online. Let us start with the public comment. Public comment is for anything that is not on the agenda. I will first open it up to anyone in the audience here who would like to make public comment. Scanning the room and seeing none, I will turn to online. Is there anyone online who would like to make public comment? We are not doing public comment online, so never mind. Moving right along, we will go to item number three, which is presentations and proclamations of which there are none. We will then go to item number four, approval of the consent calendar. Let me ask if anybody in the room would like to pull an item off the consent calendar for discussion. Anyone on the dais like to pull an item for discussion? Okay, what I would like to do is there were several emails regarding item 4.4. I am not going to pull it at this point, but I am just going to address those emails if that would be appropriate. And I will turn to the city manager and city attorney to see if that would be appropriate at this point.
I think that would be fine, Mr. Mayor. You probably need to give some context of what the emails were about.
Okay, so there was a strategic planning session, which we do once a year. And we have a meeting that's not on a Wednesday night. It is an official meeting that is televised, not televised, but broadcast online. People can come in person and we had several discussions at that meeting. One of the discussions was potentially the future of City Hall and future construction, things of that nature. That particular item is not on the agenda tonight, so I am not able to really go into depth about that. People are welcome to review the video of the last meeting, although I'm seeing head shakes, so hang on. Go ahead.
So, Mr. Mayor, because we don't hold that session here, we don't have the recording equipment with us, so we don't actually broadcast or record the session because we've always tried to do it offsite.
Got it. Okay, so let me rephrase what I said, which is that it was a session that everybody was welcome to attend if they wanted to. It would not be appropriate for me to open up that item right now because it is not agendized for discussion. But to address the concerns of people from the emails that were received, I can let people know that there is a process going on right now in order to give us information. No decisions are being made before any decisions are being made or will be made. We will share them with the public, get public input, potentially form a subcommittee or group to get advice on that. It's a little premature right now as we're still in the information gathering stages. But the public should feel comfortable that as soon as we have information, we'd be happy to share it before we make any decisions. Having said that, let me ask staff if there's anything like they'd like to add to that or think I missed.
Well, for the benefit of the public, if I may, Mr. Mayor, when we post the agenda for your strategic planning sessions, we emphasize that none of the discussion is intended to make any decisions. The vast majority of the session is looking at the city's financial picture. But as part of the session, we have always talked to the council about our anticipated workload for the coming calendar year. And so this item was highlighted by staff as one that was going to have a considerable staff component to it because essentially the item in question is about commissioning an architect and an engineer to begin the process of assessing the status of this building so that we can make future decisions about the building with information about costs. We didn't get into or debate or belabor any other topic about the building.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Is there anybody else who would like to comment on this item? Okay, and I invite if anybody has any other thoughts, you feel free to email me. I read all those emails that I get. I'm happy to respond and address them appropriately. But I think that's all we're really able to talk about at today's meeting, since as I said, it was not agendized tonight. Okay, having said that, is there anything else from the consent calendar anybody would like to discuss? Seeing nothing, do I have a motion for the consent calendar?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Could we get a roll call, please? And I'm sorry, before we do, I would like to welcome Kevin, I think, signed on. He wasn't here when we did the initial roll call. So, and Kevin, I don't mean to skip you, so let me ask you, do you have anything on the consent calendar that you would like to discuss at this point? So you know, can we get a roll call for that motion to the consent calendar?
Councilmember Carol.
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Way.
Yes.
Mayor Candell.
Yes. Okay, that motion passes, which brings us to item number five, city manager's oral report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. On Monday evening, I met with the Oversight Committee for our sales tax measures to discuss potential uses for some of the balances that have accumulated. And I'll be bringing that as an agenda item at a future council meeting. But I mentioned the meeting took place because one of the exciting things that Julian Skinner, the Director of Public Works, was able to tell the committee, and now I get to excitedly tell you, is that with the action you took this evening to accept some more of the pavement program, we're down to just two street segments that we haven't been able to complete under the Complete Rehabilitation Program that we've been doing for the last five years. And in the case of those two segments, it's because we're waiting for the utilities to do their work underground before we do our work to pave it. So that's pretty exciting. We, for all intents and purposes, hit our goal of getting everything done in five years. And we appreciate the patience of folks who, it was tough to be in year five. I know it was for some of these streets. So, but we've gotten there and we're pivoting to making sure that our streets are always rated as very good. And for folks who know the numerical system, when a street gets to 70, that's the bottom end of very good. So we're always going to try to keep our streets in the 70s at a minimum. Right now, we're fortunate that the vast majority of our network's up in the 80s, which is pretty phenomenal. We went from one of the lowest rated cities in the Bay Area on a very consistent basis to now being among one of the highest rated. Very exciting.
Fantastic. And a shout out to Public Works and everybody who's part of that. Thank you to our staff for doing such a great job. Okay, on to council members' reports. Let me start with Councilman Carroll. Anything you'd like to report on this week?
Yeah, we had a report on sustainability at the Board of Commissioners' agenda for town. And I won't repeat most of it with on Sanderville Transit Center. There were a few items that will be affecting Larkspur, particularly along corner of Madera Creek. I won't repeat it because we're going to have to go over it in more than one iteration. So I'll just leave it at that. We'll be seeing more Julian Skinner as the bottom line. I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you. Catherine or Gabe, anything that you would like to report on this week?
Sure. I have a few things. First of all, I represent us on the Marin Mayors and Council Members Legislative Committee, which met on Monday. And just a few things that I takeaways from that that I thought were interesting for all of us to know is that, so the Marin Mayors and Council Members Legislative Committee has legislative staff from CalCities who help us look at current legislation, bills that are going through committees, bills that have been introduced to see which ones are relevant to issues in Marin. So this, since the new session just started, there aren't a lot, but there's going to be a lot of bills this year that are going to probably need to be really analyzed by this group. Since January 1st, there's been 2,100 new bills introduced in the legislature, and 800 of them are rollovers from last year, so they're in various stages. But we make a lot of laws in California, I've realized. Some of them that will affect us, that potentially affect us are a lot of builders' remedy bills that are going through that are in regards to fee adjustments. We're paying attention to those. New ADUs laws that are being introduced that would delay property tax for ADUs. Of course, these are all just being introduced. These are not laws yet, and there's a long way from that. There are 50 bills that have been introduced about retail theft, and that's a retail theft issue that's happening in California. A lot of AI regulation. And one thing that they were pointing out was some of the clean fleets requirement laws that will require that cities and municipalities have clean fleets, electric cars and trucks. And some of the concerns are how cities are going to charge their fleets. Might not be too big for us because we don't have a huge fleet, but these are all the things that this committee is looking at. So I'll keep us updated on that. The second thing is I do represent us with the County Disaster Council. And the, you probably know this from your Twin Cities disaster work, is that the all county alert testing of the county alert system will be on March 23rd this year. I think 10 or 11 o'clock, I forget, Gabe, where everyone's cell phone who has registered will go off to test the alert system. So it's very important that everybody sign up for alertmarin.org and go to alertmarin.org and all the instructions, I printed them out because that's how I am, but all the instructions are there. And the second page has all the instructions on how to put emergency bypass on your phone, whether you have an Android or an iPhone, just in case you turn your phone off or at night or whatever, and you want it to still alert should there be an emergency. So that's all there, but listen for an emergency alert. We all need to do this because this is how you're going to get evacuation notifications. This is how you're going to find out if there is a wildfire and your neighborhood will be impacted. So it's very important that everybody in Larkspur and Greenbrier sign up for Alert Marin. And then lastly, or two more things, one is, on that same note, Mill Valley has their disaster fair this weekend on Sunday, which is open to the public at the community center. And I'll be there and a lot of other people who are involved in preparedness in the county. It's at 11 a.m. to 2 p.m. and it's at their community center. And it'll be a big one-stop shopping place to get all you need to see about disaster preparedness in the county. So go there. And then lastly, and Scott was there with me, is the Larkspur Community Foundation had their event last Thursday in which we attended, which was a thank you to all of the many residents of Larkspur who volunteered to participate either on City Council or Planning Commission or Park and Recreation Commission. It was a lovely turnout of so many people who are really dedicated to public service within Larkspur. And the Community Foundation did a nice job in honoring people who've been involved, particularly in our native plant restoration in the Medians and other places. And then one last thing, I just want to say I was very proud of my colleague, Gabe Paulson. Although the results of the election for supervisor District Two may not have been in the direction that he would have chosen, I think he ran an exemplary campaign, very professional, very intelligent, very above, at a level of extraordinary dedication and competency that I think we should all be proud of.
Wow, thank you. I did have someone else. Anyway, it's great to be back here and focused here. So just to piggyback off what Vice Mayor Way was saying, this weekend is our drills for the Neighborhood Response Group. So many of you may have seen the boards up, and I'm looking, there may be four of us online and three from the community. So it's only seven people, but I'm hoping that, you know, through the newsletter that the city does or the website, you know, we can get as much, if not for the Sunday morning drill, that's Sunday, you know, what's going to come up then in the fall. And these are just so important because we know that wildfire is a risk, but it's hard to keep people motivated and to understand how much it matters that we do these volunteer activities because in these events, we've heard over and over from tubs and campfire, the first responders cannot help you, you have to help yourself. And that's true of flooding, of earthquakes, and then fire, of course, it's evacuation. So just if you can spread the word a little bit, even, you know, those of us here, it's this Sunday. And generally for the public, it means put up an okay or help, you know, in your window or on your door. And it just keeps us aware and there's a lot going on behind the scenes and in the community. The other thing I wanted to report on, which I've not really gotten to do, is Flood Zone 9. So when Mayor and, you know, long-term council member Dan Helmer left, he, you know, left that seat open, and I've been representing. And I was at the meeting last week. And we know from the election, Measure F in San Anselmo, that this is something that's been, you know, a real challenge for the community. And Measure F is San Anselmo's intent, and it looks like it's winning for them to pull out entirely. And I'd like, you know, in future, council member reports to be a little more detailed and substantive for you because Larkspur is at the bottom end of the creek. We're not building Bridge 2 of the $50 million. You know, it would be a very good, you know, discussion. I'll continue to report out on how we benefited, and we're in this for several more years. So I really, now that I have some time, I really want to get back to the community and what this means to us and how, you know, we might move from here. But for now, we just approved the operational budget. Building Bridge 2 is kind of a dam and a bottleneck which floods everything upstream. But if you open it up, you tend to flood Ross downstream. So there was a lot of, you know, litigation concerns. And largely, the lack of coordination with FEMA is what has stopped this project from going forward. So in the end, if you do these things, you need FEMA to sign off because then you can change flood insurance and it benefits the community. But they were using a model from the Army Corps of Vegetarians that FEMA doesn't recognize. So that might take quite a while. So, you know, another snag in a very long road. And, you know, and Catherine now sits on the MWPA, and to me, that's an agency that's quite on the opposite end of the spectrum. It's one that people see results and they're happy with, and it's very functional. I think Flood Zone 9, you know, I'm now very dedicated to seeing what we can do in general and in Larkspur to kind of bringing some of the same, you know, results for the voters that we see in the Marin Wildfire Prevention Agency. So that's it for me.
Okay, and just quickly, I wanted to report out. Catherine and I went to a 1251 Elysio meeting between last meeting and now, and there are some issues that are being worked on. We want to assure everybody we are aware of any issues that are going on, and we are working with the county in order to resolve them and move forward in a positive way. And we will continue to go, there's another meeting coming up. We'll continue to participate and report out how things are going. And that's my only report. So, having said that, let's go to number seven, public hearings, which we have none. And we have business items. We have one, which is allocation of general fund reserve. And can we get a staff report on that, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council members, this item is a follow-up to a discussion that we held at a prior meeting to get your feedback on how we might structure and put to use the reserve funds that have built up in the general fund. The reason we've built up a healthy balance is primarily because during the period we were doing the Bon Air Bridge project, and even to some extent, the two bridges we did before at Bon Air Bridge, we held on to more cash than normal. And the reason was because we had to pay bills and then request reimbursement. So now's come the time to take that cash that we built up and decide what we're still holding for reserves and what we should be starting to assign to potential other uses. And based on our last meeting and the feedback you gave us, we've put together a resolution to do that. The key page in the entire packet that we've given you is probably the one that's Exhibit A of the resolution, which by my count is the sixth page in your agenda item. And that is actually where you're taking action, and it's two parts. The first is to do some assignments within the general fund reserves. One is our standing policy to hold 25% of the general fund and reserve so that we always have a healthy cash flow and we're always prepared for a rainy day. The second is that, as I vented a little bit before, CalPERS not performing as well as they thought they would. And as a result, all the agencies that participate in the CalPERS Pension Program got a bill. And it's a bill that's going to be there for several years. Our budget wasn't prepared for the magnitude of that bill. We've always expected there would be continuing costs, but we were surprised by the magnitude. So I'd like, I've suggested that we set aside money to use to smooth our budget over the next few years as we are able to catch up and adjust to this new reality from CalPERS.
Can you remind me what that amount was?
Yeah, so the first amount that we're asking, we're suggesting that 5.5 million be set aside to meet the policy. And then we're suggesting 2.5 million be held to use to smooth over the impact of the CalPERS increase.
What was that CalPERS increase number, though?
So we anticipated it'd be close to half a million dollars a year. And we think the budget can grow and absorb that from where we were projecting it would be. But we, it's probably a two to three-year period to make that adjustment. What I want to point out, when I say we're going to put this in the reserves, it doesn't mean we're necessarily going to use it. It means if we get toward the end of the year and we weren't able to absorb the increase from CalPERS somewhere else in the budget, we'd know we had this pot of money to draw upon so that we're not hurting any programs during this period while we, while we kind of work through the consequences of CalPERS's underperformance. One of the ways we also built up the cash reserve was that we weren't making the payments into our OPEB liability trust that the council had set as a goal several years ago, which was to put about half a million a year into a trust. This is an irrevocable trust that is used to pay down our obligations for retiree medical programs that we used to offer that we no longer offer. And so we're proposing that we essentially make four payments at once and use $2 million from the reserve to sort of recognize that we deferred these payments for several years. And then lastly, it's been your longstanding practice and policy that the remaining balance of the reserves be set aside for one-time capital expenditures. And so the balance at this time would be $7.8 million. But you, as is detailed in the staff report, you've committed some of that already to guarantee various projects, most notably the expanded program for the Commons Project, the library and the additional community rooms, and the resiliency disaster recovery components. Those are being guaranteed by the general fund while the staff tries to find other sources of money. So that's part of that $7.8 million that we would be holding there. The other thing that's been missing from our program is sort of refining the policies around what we do when we have good years, when we have excess revenues. We've always had the policy that we would put 25% aside to protect the general fund. And we've always had this sort of outstanding practice and policy around the idea that we would set aside monies for capital projects. That's probably not nuanced enough, so we put some bullet points in that we thought could provide some greater direction to staff in what to do if we have a good year with some excess revenue. So foremost is the 25% protection by policy. But second, we have a fund that we use to pay insurance claims. And some years we get hit, some years it sits. We belong to a risk pool. The risk pool tells us what they think we ought to have set aside given what's happening in Larkspur and what our experience factors have been for the last decade. And they combine that with what they're seeing across Marin and what they're seeing across California. And they make a recommendation to us on what those levels ought to be. So our suggestion is that in a good year, if we're running any deficient, if we're deficient of their recommendation, we would put money into the insurance fund to keep it where they recommend. It's essentially locking it into another place in reserve in case we need it. Third would be to make sure, if necessary, that any commitments to pay down OPEB liability trusts or any CalPERS unfunded accrued liability would be met up to $500,000 a year. That would take a pretty good year if we hit that third bullet and we still have that kind of cash to sprinkle. But once in a blue moon, we do have, you know, something happens, a nice blip in our revenue stream. And then lastly, any remainder would be to go into capital projects. So there's some policy guidelines we're suggesting be adopted as part of the resolution. As a reference and as a reminder, you've made some capital commitments within that $7.8 million that's out there. And that is detailed in the staff report. It's detailed on page two of the staff report about midway down. It starts with the Commons Project. You've said, set aside 4.66 million to guarantee that we can do the additional work at the project. You also have made some small commitments that are still outstanding for a retaining wall on Laurel Avenue, the inlet gates at the lagoon in the Marina, which are our responsibility. And then to complete our general plan update in our housing elements. So those are commitments that are within that pot of money that you've already decided. So they, you at least need to put that much into the capital program to back those particular commitments that you've made. As a reminder, for the way this works functionally, anything that's in the general fund reserve, unless you've authorized us to transfer it out, that's where it stays. So although you're setting up these categories, these categories don't constitute authorization for the staff to move the money out of the general fund reserve. It's simply a guidance to you and a guidance to staff on how to make recommendations when the time comes to look at those transfers. So with that, I turn it back to the council.
Thank you for that. Let me turn it to council and see if anyone has questions for staff. Catherine?
So this committed state bailout reserve that we're trying to find, the $321,614.17, that sort of, nope. Can you just elaborate on that?
I apologize. I forgot all about that. So.
But then, so elaborate on that. And then the second question is, $321,000 X amount of that, is there an opportunity when we're having this conversation that we could allocate that maybe to one of the capital projects directly?
You could. You could certainly, staff was just saying, let's add it to the balance for capital projects, period. But if you wanted to specifically allocate it, you could do that. For the benefit of the public, if they haven't seen the staff report, in the course of looking at the general fund reserves, Administrative Services Director Amelia Gabrielle started researching why there was a restricted pot of money that was labeled committed state bailout reserve. And it's this $321,000. And we couldn't find very good documentation, so we actually had to reach out to retirees of the city to try to sort this out. And even they were struggling. It looks like it's been basically in a restricted account within the general fund reserve for 30 years. And best we can tell, and I talked to my predecessor, and she thought in all likelihood it was a pot of money we got from the state during one of the various recessions and flip flops of the way they were moving money around. And the city at the time probably didn't trust that the state wasn't going to come and try to take that money from some other revenue stream. So they parked it and waited, and for better or for worse, it sort of got forgotten, which, you know, people could go, how could you forget about that sum of money? But, you know, the books used to be done on ledgers back then, and then they went to a DOS Matrix printout system with a pretty antiquated proprietary accounting software. So, you know, kind of probably got lost. And back in the early 90s, $321,000 was no small chunk of change. Today, while it's certainly still a sizable sum of money, it's a different scale for us now. But we are recommending you move it into the broader general fund reserve and put it in the capital line.
The reason why I ask that is because we are, we are committed now to the Commons Project and the new library and community spaces, which is not. there is still opportunities to fund more aspects of that project. So, I mean, it seems like 321,000 was an unexpected, I don't want to say windfall, but an unexpected trunk of money that it would be nice if we could figure out a way to to make sure we save that and prioritize any extra needs that the the Commons Project might have. It's my thoughts. I mean, we could continue to put it in the general fund with that sort of policy understanding that we do have some money that may be needed to finish some projects there.
Well, perhaps the best approach would be if to, you know, I'll make note that you want to be reminded that that pot of money was found when we come back and Mr. Skinner's talking about what we can and can't pay for him.
Yeah.
The extras that he identified in his list.
I would like that. I don't know if my other council members do, but, I mean, I feel like it's lovely that we found some money that was allocated many years ago that we have not actually needed or or I want to, I don't want to say the word earmark, but put aside for certain things. But I do know when we, when we had our meeting the other day with the Commons Foundation and the project, it's well underway now. We're, we're got a great process going through. But there will be needs for computers and furniture and landscaping and other things that we may need to use this. So I would, as a sort of a general policy idea, like to make sure we can keep that top of our priority list.
I probably should say to to assure anyone is although we didn't understand what this pot of money was or why it had been sitting there so long, we operate what's called a general cash pool, essentially a treasury. All our money, all the money we manage for our agency and two other agencies gets pulled together and invested and we earn interest. So it's been sitting there, but it's been accruing interest that's been contributing to the general fund reserve. So it's not, it's not that it was sitting totally unused. I just want to make that clear.
And then my last question is, CalPERS, as we all know, is a rather much of an enigma for many of us in local governance. Are there, I mean, a $500,000, five, estimated $500,000 expectation that cities make that contribution because they have not managed or potentially earned the amount of money that other financial institutions are earning? Are there cities, are there cities that are going to push back against that? Are you aware of any, Sky, that are sort of in a collaboration to push back about this continual ask of cities to bail out CalPERS management? Did I just open a can of worms? Because we, yeah.
I think we, I think we could, I think, I think we could co-editorialize that. It is a complicated question because I think that that my experience suggests that a number of cities have serious questions about a number of aspects of the way that CalPERS is operating. At the same time, CalPERS is is managing the retirement portfolio for most of the cities in the state. And so there's a delicate balance to be struck between asking for some greater accommodation to cities budgets and maintaining a good relationship with an organization that is managing such a significant portfolio for so many public agencies in the state.
I mean, we're a pretty small jurisdiction and with a smaller budget than, but there are smaller jurisdictions than ours all over the state with much smaller budgets that $500,000 is a huge chunk of money.
So I want to make sure we, we don't
All right, I'm done editorializing.
So the amount each agency is being charged to deal with this is not 500,000. It's, it's based on what essentially an actuary has determined your agency needs to contribute for your proportional share of what CalPERS is going to be paying out to people. So had we not paid for our prior balance and fixed, put it at a fixed rate when we issued bonds, this number would be a seven-figure number, not a six-figure number. So that's a perspective one. And then a really tiny agency is probably suffering too, but it might be a $70,000 adjustment per year for them. So it's, it's hard to put it all. My, my prime, primary answer to your question, though, is the single largest member agency of CalPERS is the state. And for better for worse, this problem is budget dust to the state. And so your biggest member, the 800-pound gorilla, isn't all that concerned about this. And they've already built out their program to deal with the state's unfunded liability. I've sat through a couple of presentations and it's been very clear to me, the administration doesn't view this as a significant concern for the state. So if they don't, it would take all the cities sort of collectively working together to be big enough to offset that. And even then, the voting power of the cities at the CalPERS board is pretty small. So.
And I'm sorry, a quick question. Are we contractually obligated to stay with CalPERS? I mean, if we, we think they're doing a terrible job, do we have an option?
So the unwinding process, Sausalito, actually, about 15 years ago, had that priced out to see what it was. And it was, at that time, for them, not us, for them, it was like 50 to 60 million payment right off the bat, just to start by, to buy out. So it's not a little option because you got to go through a whole bunch of stuff. There are small agencies that leave and a few of them actually determine it's cheaper for them to pay the commitment that they made for a pension than it is to stay in CalPERS. You know, the other, so to answer your question, yes, we do have a binding agreement with CalPERS. And then it's compounded by, we have a binding agreement with our employees to provide that benefit. So you have multiple layers you'd have to unwind. And then I just think the price tag would be out of our, our, our means.
Great. Thank you. Gabe, you have any questions for staff? Not right now. Kevin, any questions for staff at this point?
None. I, I have a few. Could you just explain, I know we have, it feels like we have some options as far as how much to pay for, you know, the OPEB liabilities or CalPERS or, you know, the insurance, you know? And I guess I'm trying to understand kind of the opportunity costs of paying versus not paying. That if we have like OPEB, for example, we're like, oh, let's, you know, pay for four times what we're supposed to pay in order to catch up. Are we paying interest by not paying? Like, do we pay a penalty for not paying? And is that greater than the interest that we would make if we kept the money for ourselves and invested?
So an irrevocable OPEB liability trust is owned by the city. It's the city's money. When you put it in the trust, you're committing to how it'll be spent. And you're, you're essentially making a commitment to the people you made the contractual arrangement and promise that you would provide that benefit, that you've set aside money to meet that obligation. I have to go double check. I think our agency's obligation total is 10 or 11 million at the moment, projected by an actuary. That's what we ought to have in the bank to guarantee that we could cover our obligation. OPEB theory is a robust area of debate. So some agencies are choosing to do pay as you go and just see where the chips fall. Other agencies have fully funded their OPEB liability trust. And then other agencies, like Larkspur, currently kind of somewhere in the middle where we're trying to put some money in the trust and we're trying to pay.
Do we know if we put the money into the trust, how it's being invested and what kind of return are you getting on it?
We control that.
Oh, so
To a degree.
So basically, whether we put it in the trust or not, we control the investment and we can
So we actually chose, we shopped for an investment trust. There's three or four major vendors in this area. We actually end up selecting CalPERS now before you go, oh, my God, because we just said CalPERS is terrible. They're not the folks that are managing the main CalPERS pool. There's another group that runs these trusts and the trusts, essentially, they, whoever you go with, they are essentially like buying mutual funds. So they're sort of guaranteeing you a reasonable rate of return. We picked a trust that had a moderate level of risk. So there is risk in the trust, but the trust has continued to perform where we thought it would be. So we're seeing returns anywhere from three to 7%, depending on how the, the the portfolio that they purchased has been performing. And that's, that's not too bad. There are other pools and other options that we could elect. We could transfer the money to another vendor who, if we thought we liked their product better. But it is still our money. And you can pay your current year bills out of the money. So if for some reason we manage to, to survive paying our OPEB, I always feel uncomfortable as I get into my risk manager speak here, but at some point, the lives in the program expire. That's what the technical phrasing is. So, and so at some point, the liability starts to diminish and go away because there aren't obligations to cover anymore. If the trust still had money in it, you can pay your current obligations to your active employees out of the trust as well. So you, you're really not losing anything in that respect. You're just committing that that money's only going to get spent on this particular category.
Are, are there any of the other options that we're talking about, you know, paying more than is necessarily required where it might, we might do better financially, keeping the money, investing it the way that we do as opposed to, you know, paying it off, paying off other agencies?
That's a tough one to answer too, because we historically as a city have chosen fairly conservative parameters for our investments. And in fact, we've only recently been opening up our treasury to a little more risk and return. And, and a little more for us, we, you know, we turned cartwheels to sort of pigeonhole the bank into giving us a high yield account for four and a half percent, right? That was like a big accomplishment for us because we tend to be really conservative with the city's money.
Well, the money's still in the bank.
Not all of it, by the way, not all of it. We, we've laddered quite a bit of it and depending on what it's allocated for, we've been laddering it into different CDs and other investment vehicles that everybody's familiar with. We don't go out and just purchase stocks, although there are some investment vehicles that are within state law allowed. We just haven't, as a city, chosen to risk our money that way. So that's a long way around answering your question. I think the irrevocable trust is probably a pretty good vehicle for that pot of money. But you have to have the trade off that you've restricted it. The CalPERS money, I'm suggesting stay in the treasury and just be available in case we need it. So it's, it, and if we don't need it in a few years, we would say, what do you want to do with it now? Because we've survived this period of adjusting to what CalPERS hit us with. So that really is just me saying, let's have a category in the pot in the treasury that, that we're not going to do anything else with. And that's more typical of what we're, we're doing. I, I do have an obligation to tell you because you've been delivered in the past reports from the city's actuary about our OPEB liability. There is no law that says how much you have to put in, but the actuary would tell you you're way behind in making payments. And the council set the half a million dollar mark as a goal, not as a, you didn't even adopt it as a pure policy. It was Mr. Seaman had to try to hit that target in the budget. And we just had to stop doing that to help build that accumulation of cash.
Those are all my questions. Any discussion about this? Actually, open it up to, is this a public hearing? Open up to the public?
It's a business item, but you should probably open it up to the public.
Okay, is there anybody in the public that has a comment on this item? Seeing none, let's bring it back to council for discussion.
There's one minor question. I, I'm, just, it's curiosity, but the item, the inlet gates at the lagoon at the Larkspur Marina, can you say a little bit more about that? Because I, you know, have heard about it, but I don't understand how it's tied into capital improvements or storm drains or what we're doing there.
Two people here are sort of chuckling. So it, it's a convoluted history that we don't have time to do the entirety of. But the Reader's Digest explanation is the homeowners association in the Larkspur Marina neighborhood owns the lagoon itself and is responsible for the, what's called the bulkheads, the walls around the lagoon. For a variety of reasons, the city owns the gates that let creek water in and out of the lagoon. And so we own and maintain these gates. I mean, they're, they're literally flaps and tubes that allow the water to move back and forth. And so they had fallen into disrepair and we actually had just been leaving the gates open and then pumping water, which is not an efficient thing to do. So we, once we started to see that our cash reserves were getting healthy again, we prioritized dealing with this and getting the gates taken care of. We have a slight benefit from the way that neighborhood's built because street water flows into the lagoon. So I think that is one of the reasons the city made this particular commitment years ago to control the the actual level of the marina. So the long-term consequence is we every year make, make sure that level of the lagoon doesn't get too high, particularly in periods when we're having so much rain.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, let's bring it back for discussion. Any, someone like to lead us on this?
I think it's well explained. I think we've been talking about this for a while now and I feel confident that we've allocated it. I think my issue was just that policy wise, I'd like us to prioritize opportunities we have to contribute more to the Commons as it's going along in this project. So I'm ready to pass Resolution 1124. I move Resolution 1124.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Carol?
That was a muted yes, I believe.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Way?
Yes.
Mayor Candel?
Yes. Okay. That was our business item and our last item is adjournment. So thank you all for being here with us and have a wonderful couple of weeks. We will see you at the next meeting.